Okay, so we're going to add those two to the agenda. And next, we're going to go to our principal.
Do you need a motion to add those or not? Last month, we motioned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we add public comments and committee reports to tonight's agenda.
Okay.
All right, let's roll call in. Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie and Debbie, yes. Okay. All right, so now we have Danielle. We have your school principal report.
Okay. So if you weren't able to click on the links in the PDF or if you want a hard copy, the drafts of the handbooks are here in front of Debbie and John and the opening days. And I can walk you through what we did for some of the biggest changes, if that would be helpful.
Great.
Decided purposely not to change a lot of content this year, but just to try to clean up and streamline or consolidate things. So maybe this one first. So in the staff handbook, you want to start with that one. It didn't have a calendar, but the student handbook did, so we added the calendar. It said school mission statements, but really it's the mission, vision, and philosophy, so we changed the heading of it and then consolidated the philosophy, the bill of rights and responsibilities into the same section. Then restructured a little bit so that it was general information, attendance assessments, AEDs, animals in classroom, all of that was on there before. AM attendance and lunch count was on there before. Absence request for, we changed since we don't have the same system that we had last year, so I just put in the new process and linked to the form that they'll use. If it's a before day of absence, they'll put it in the form. If it's a day of absence, they have to actually text me and let me know that they're not going to be in for work. Took out at-risk tutoring and attendance at after-school activities because they were covered in other sections. Bullying and community outreach stayed. Took out character because it was covered in a later section, character and citizen education. So again, just there were similar dependencies. I think people, different authors over the course of time, adding in chunks. Contract meant all the Cs stayed the same. Classroom celebrations, I cleaned up the language a little bit, but it's basically the same idea that all fourth-grade teachers should have common big celebrations together, right? You don't want one party in one fourth grade and not in the other two. Curriculum, not much change there. Discipline, I cleaned that up. So discipline previously had discipline, basic principles, basic criteria for an effective discipline model, and typical ineffective methods of discipline. I took those whole, those three pieces and made them one section and then linked to a color one-page handout that the teachers had used last year, talking about what gets managed in the classroom, what gets managed, you know, by a call to the family, what gets managed by calling for help and support. So again, more streamlining than changing anything. And then the next one, homework guidelines. I took out of the staff handbook because it's in the student handbook, and both of them, they're required to know both of them, so I didn't feel like it was necessary to have in both places. Phone use, I took out because that's back from the days when we used to have to pay for long-distance calls and you didn't want people running up the long-distance bill at school. So we took that one out. Report cards and interim reports, we took that out. We talked about the dates. And we're hoping to move towards Alma being open to families, so it would be more live recording. So those kind of structured dates and report cards, that didn't need to be in there anymore. Requesting a substitute, I took out because it was covered in the asking for leave. Radio operators, we re-titled walkie-talkies and put it at the end. School colors and mascot, I just combined. Technology purchase staff, we took out. I was informed that that was no longer a current practice. It used to be something where like teachers could buy when the school bought in bulk, I guess. So that's not current. So we've removed that. And then there was previously a section on a lot of different duty pieces, so we just consolidated that into kind of duty notes at the end. Eventually, I'd like that to be within the body and organized differently, but again, I didn't want to totally change everything. So just did some consolidation there and cleaned it up to be more general instead of like AM bus duty, PM bus duty, a little bit more holistic, and then stuck walkie-talkies at the end. So again, mostly organization, a little bit of cleaning up. Not a lot of content changed this year. I think that'll come next year when I can have the leadership team help me with it.
Thank you.
For the student handbook, again, most of this was formatting. So the mission, vision, lining that up with the staff handbook, and then a lot of formatting. So trying to center and underline things so that it kind of stood out to families, like, okay, this chunk is attendance, this chunk is behavior. A lot of that was what we did. We tried to keep mention of policies where they appropriate. So you know, where it talks about bullying, it should reference your policy on bullying. Some of them were linked and some of them aren't, so that's something that John and I want to clean up. Quite honestly, I just ran out of time. So it's referenced there, but they're not necessarily linked yet, and we'll get there. Under curriculum, I did some consolidation because lots of things were listed under language arts, and I just tried to narrow it a little bit. You know, it was broken down in the spelling box, reading penmanship. So again, consolidation. There were some inaccuracies, like student services, it had listed IDEA section 504, and that's not the right, like IDEA is separate, section 504 isn't one thing. So we tried to clean that up. Took out the language of special education resource rooms because really, we have as much as possible a push-in model of support. So talking about that resource room of being a place where you go to get extra help, again, they needed to be in the handbook. We did a basic dress code. So I was informed that the dress code expectations were developed with students in the past. We didn't change them. But what we did was just kind of say, this is the basic dress code, and instead of focusing on enforcement and the retroactive piece, like, nope, this is what you're going to do. And, you know, the discipline policy is there if there is an infringement. It called out bicycles and skateboards, and we kind of put them together in the transportation piece. Tried to clean up the dismissal pieces and really lean on the fact that we're going to use pickup patrol to help us streamline that. We added phone calls within parent communication because that wasn't highlighted. Fundraising, we updated. There were some in there that are no longer, like, we don't do Campbell's labels anymore or anything like that. Really, just as box tops. So that's about it with the student handbook.
That was a lot of work. Okay, so you need a motion to adopt those with the changes.
Yes, please.
I move we adopt the revised staff handbook and the revised student handbook for the 2122 school year.
Second.
All right, discussion. Well done. I know you've been so busy. Thank you so much.
Well, I will reiterate, it's a start. It's not where we want them to be, but it is a start, so thank you.
All righty, so Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All right.
All right. The next item I had for action was art studio. So you have in your board packet the proposal for art studio. Ideally, I would love for you to approve all of them at once, so the fall, the winter, spring, and next summer session, so that I can write the grant activities all at once instead of three different times. And it would allow the teachers and families to plan ahead for these programs. They have typically been funded through REIT grants. We could also try to write the activity into ESSER funds because it relates to engagement and enrichment for students, so we do have some options there. And if you have any questions on the outline or the proposal, I'd be happy to answer them, or we could put Mrs. Jordan on the spot because she's here too.
Okay, so that is for, Danielle's asking if we would approve the winter, spring, and summer session right now for the art studio, three different sessions instead of doing it separately. And the total is $3,300 if we did all three. And we would hope to fund them either from REIT or from ESSER funds.
Yes, they would be grant funded.
Okay, so Danielle, make a message, make a motion about that.
I move that we accept the proposal for art studio for fall, winter, and spring.
Summer.
Summer for the 2122 school year. The amount of $3,300 to be funded through the REIT grant and/or ESSER funds.
Second.
Okay, discussion. And this is all inclusive, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, good. All righty. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. That's actually going to save us time in the future. Good. Okay.
Awesome, thank you very much. So my next piece, you may decide to, it's under information for me. You may decide to move it to action, but wanted to provide at the first, when I do my report, I'll always provide an enrollment update. Dr. Freeman included the Co-Brown numbers last time, so I didn't have them in here, but wanted just to highlight where we were with enrollment. We have increased these numbers since your board packets were prepared. So of note, the pre-K numbers are increased, but we're still doing okay with where they are. First grade is up to 54, I believe. And fifth grade is at 48.
All righty, we did discuss the fifth grade situation of having two teachers with 48 students, which is a lot for Stratford. So we discussed possibly having some funds that we may be able to draw some, draw from. So would anyone like to make a motion about that fifth grade situation?
I move that we look to hire an additional fifth grade teacher to be funded from our local operating budget and additionally from ESSER funds if those are possible to use.
Because, oh, second. Because of learning loss.
We want to have smaller groups of students.
Yep.
Exactly. Okay, discussion? Okay, so we would ask that that position be posted for and hopefully find a quality candidate and.
Awesome, thank you.
All righty, so. Yes, Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie. That's why I was. All right, there you go.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions on the information. I can quickly go through it if you want me to do it for the folks who are here. What's your pleasure?
For which one?
The rest of my information items. Do you want me to walk through them or are you good?
Well, I think it, I think it's nice to, you've done some very nice things here with new family orientation thing, and I think it's nice to share with everybody what you've been doing.
Sure thing. So we had scheduled two family orientations for this week. We did our first one yesterday, and we had nine families come and participate, and we'll have another one tomorrow afternoon at 5:30. I had three students who came and helped me out yesterday because I told them, I was like, I'm new, I need you guys to help me out. They were great tour guides. We got some good feedback from them. Tried to keep it pretty informal, just answering questions, anticipating some questions around arrival and dismissal and things like that. Got some pictures of our new students, so I can share them with their teachers because that, you know, you know what your, the kids who are already here look like, so we'll be able to share some of those photos. And then our three students took them for a tour around the building and kind of answered other questions. So about 45 minutes, nine families. I'm going to do it again tomorrow night.
Do you have any idea how many will be here tomorrow night?
So we had at least 16 families who are enrolled this year, and some of that is because, some of them were homeschooled last year, so they may have moved into town last year, but just didn't enroll. You know, they either kept up with remote at their previous school or whatever. So we hope that we'll see the others happen. You have the opening day schedule for next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for our staff on Wednesday and Thursday, and then just the teachers on Friday. And our kindergarten staff will have their kids Friday morning, so that'll be fun to have them in the building. We would love any of you, if they're available, to come Wednesday morning. Dr. Freeman will do a nice address, and Eric's going to have a breakfast and coffee out for us. So if you guys want to come and welcome everyone back Wednesday morning, we'd love to invite you to join us.
What time?
We're going to start at eight. So eight to nine is kind of the welcome and greeting time. We are changing the mentor program a little bit. This one, I'd love to thank Georgia Garland for stepping up. So previously, the mentor program was facilitated by SAU 44 and SAU staff. Georgia was able to share the mentor handbook with me and has offered to take the lead, supporting the mentors and the mentees this year, and she'll start their first meeting next Friday. If you don't know, Stratford has a history of supplying mentors for the first two years of employment, so it's not just that first year, which is really nice, especially in COVID, where the first year might have looked a little bit different, so support them through their second year. You have a list of our folks serving on the leadership team, so they'll meet with us, I think we decided, on Wednesday mornings, and we'll have scheduled meetings twice a month. If we don't need the second one, we won't use it, but that way they can help us with leading the school and facilitating the team meetings as needed. I think all of you had heard, but I wanted to make sure that in my report that Remy Jones, you had approved her for seven, eight social studies. She had asked to move to five, six social studies. If you'll remember on her resume, she has that love of Greek and Roman culture, and that was her background. So when Karen Beaverstock decided to move on, she asked if she could move down. So that's why the opening's at that 70 position. And just that update on ordering. So we're getting there. We had a lot of materials actually get delivered in the last two weeks, and I sent out an email today saying, anybody available to help? And I got a great picture of like six different people helping Heather open boxes and deliver things today. So we're getting closer. We do have a number of supplies that are on back order, but Heather is looking to see if there's other vendors who can get us the supplies before school starts, and then she'll cancel the other order. So we're working on it.
Thank you. All righty.
Great, thank you. First, first off, we have a resignation.
Dr. Freeman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we need to motion on the students? Weren't we going to do that during Danielle's time?
Enrollment.
Oh, during enrollment, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two different situations. You want to take one, Erica? And Eric, you want to take the second one?
Sure.
Okay.
So I move that we honor the request for a set of brothers to attend Spalding, one as a essentially second semester senior and one in 10th grade. Parents to provide transportation. We will pay up to the Co-Brown cost for this year.
Okay.
Second.
All right, discussion? Okay. Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay. And the other one?
So the second one. I move that we accept the parents' request for the family is moving into town on mid-September 13th, and they have a placement for a student entering grade 10, grade 5. Grade 10 is at Co-Brown.
Okay, so going to approve those placements. Wait a second. Okay, discussion? All righty. So again, just for the record, that we did review the purchase and sales agreement for the home that the new family is moving into. We know, we saw the date, so everything's been verified that this will be happening very soon. Okay? All right, Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yep.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay?
Thank you. And now I present you a resignation from Nicole Marshall, former teacher who has resigned her position here.
Okay, do we have a motion?
To accept the resignation? I motion that we accept the resignation of Nicole Marshall.
Okay, wait a second. Okay, discussion? Okay, Nicole was a very great teacher, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All righty, so Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
Thank you. And three nominations. One is an individual who you appointed last time as a paraprofessional, Paula Martell. I mentioned last time that I suspect that there may be additional documentation, and she did provide that. So she's recommended as a para at 1855 an hour. I think it's step 18. Did you ask me that question earlier, Carrie?
Yeah.
I did have that. Second individual is Michelle Blum, recommended as, nominated as a third grade teacher. She's a teacher who has experience in the primary grades and comes to us from Franklin. Her salary is projected to be $45,433. And the final candidate is Jacqueline Clattenburg. She's being nominated as a special education teacher. And as board members know, this is a critical shortage area, so very challenging to attract candidates for this position in other critical shortage areas. Ms. Clattenburg is recommended at a salary of $57,317 because she comes to us with lengthy experience as a faculty member in, mostly in Hillsborough, but in other school districts as well.
Good.
I move we accept the nominations as presented by Dr. Freeman.
Second.
Okay, discussion? And these candidates were all vetted and overwhelmingly supported by the team.
Yeah, let me ask both Melissa and Danielle just to describe the process briefly of what you did for the school board members.
Sure. So I think both Danielle and I approached similarly in that we grabbed a pool of faculty members together that have a vested interest in that position, and we've worked as team members together. And we go through the process of interviewing. We use the guided storytelling process. And then we collaboratively discuss, you know, the pros and cons of any candidate and so forth and call references, and then make recommendations to John or Mr. Freeman.
And as a final step, I interview the candidates as well. Professional candidates, I did not interview, do not interview the paraprofessional candidates, but I did speak with both teachers, and they both are at full support of both of them.
Good. All righty, ready to vote? Okay, Liz?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
Now, I want to move on to COVID and COVID impact. And I will share with you that what you're, what you're receiving is a draft of a district reopening plan. And this is coming to you later than it should have been coming to you, and I apologize for that. However, there was a misunderstanding on my part in terms of meeting the requirements of getting this to you in a timely manner. Again, I apologize. What I tried to do in drafting this was to sort of try to create an organized piece that would sort of rationally go through the situation of the COVID, that would acknowledge the influence of other agencies, such as New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Service and Department of Education. And then over on page two, three, and over into four is essentially a combination of practices that I think we ended the school year with and includes a school board's vote at a previous meeting relative to masking and onsite education and other things that I thought might be of interest to families, including some items I took from last, last year's plan. Now, I don't want to ask you to vote for this now, but I do need to ask you to vote for it very soon. So I was wondering, one of two things, wondering if you wouldn't mind taking some time, perhaps brief time, at next week's workshop to have a brief public session to vote on this. And I think that can be facilitated, at least the timeliness, if you send me your concerns or issues you have with what I put down here. And if that's okay with you, then I'll send you home with these and ask you again for your feedback over the next few days, and we'll post a brief public session for it next Wednesday. That's good.
At the beginning of the meeting?
Thursday? Thursday.
Thursday, right?
Did I say Wednesday?
It's at three.
So if we're starting at three, we would just probably take the first 15 minutes, do this, and then go to our workshop. And that would be almost a special meeting because we're not going to have public comment. We're not going to have all that.
Right, we'll post it as such. And again, my apologies, totally my, my shortcoming on this, and we'll work not to let this sort of thing recur.
I thought that Nate did this in June for us. I thought it was like a quick thing that they put together because there was a deadline.
There was, there was something that had to be submitted, but I felt that it needed a fresh look at it.
Okay.
Okay. If I can add, a lot of it said, will be decided in the fall.
Okay.
A lot of it was placeholder to meet the deadline.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your indulgence on this. I also mentioned, and a couple of board members, I think Erica and Eric were involved in the training last week on divisive concepts.
It was also.
Oh, listen, I didn't realize that. Well, then, I'm giving you all the information, the three of you, and I apologize, but I wanted you to have the information we received. The beginning is something you've seen already, the first couple of pages on the frequently asked questions. You asked me to link that to the website, it hasn't been done yet, but we will do that. So what schools are prohibited is outlined on that first page. You can see those bullets there about below halfway, that teaching that one identified group is inherently superior or inferior, inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment, or shall not treat members of other identified groups equally, which is really the toughest thing to understand out of this whole thing for me because it seems like a big contradiction. Over on page two, I'll call your attention to a couple of those items here, just as a reminder. And item number three, and again, the source of this is the Department of Education Commission for Human Rights and the Department of Justice of our state. Item number three does offer, have a teacher some teaching US history, and it's, the answer is no, it does not. And that the subjects include those named there, Native American population, Jim Crow laws, segregation, treatment of women, et cetera. On item five, a parent or student has complained about certain lessons relative to racism that it may have made them uncomfortable. Is this a violation? And we're advised it is not a violation. And then item six, can parents or guardians refuse to allow their children to participate in specific course material? And the answer is yes. And the school board does have a policy, policy IGE, which allows for parents to object to specific court content. Beginning on page four, you'll find the PowerPoint that was used in the presentation last week. And I'll just highlight a couple of items on there. On page five, you'll see identified the protected classes in accordance with RSA 354A. Those we probably have been used to hearing quite a bit. And then the other is, another point on that page is the divisive concepts bill was originally, and as was discussed and played up in the press, was originally much broader. And I think that was when the language of critical race theory was included. That does not appear in this law.
It was much broader, and it was standalone. And it did not succeed. So that's why it got tacked onto the budget. This is sort of a back door.
Thank you. If you take a look over at page six and page seven, those four bullets from the previous document are described again with a little bit more detail. document are described again with a little bit more detail. And again, one of four, that people are inherently superior or inferior cannot be taught, that people are inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or not, cannot be taught. Item number three, over on page seven again, that an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of his or her age, sex, gender identity, et cetera. And just a reminder, the school board does have anti-discrimination policy, policy IGC, which guarantees these rights as well. Item four of four is the one that I find confusing. When I consulted with my attorney, he said that it would be a problem if I didn't find it confusing, because it is confusing when you read it, that people of one age, sex, gender, identity, sexual orientation, et cetera, cannot and should not attempt to treat others equally or without regard to age, sex, gender, identity, sexual orientation, et cetera. So it seems to be a contradiction, the way I read it. And I think we'll just have to wait to see how this one plays out, quite frankly. But I don't think any of those items impact our social studies curriculum, which is based on the New Hampshire state standards, which have been around for 15-plus years, right? There's a whole lot of other information there, but I just wanted to point out, I think, one or two other items. If you look back a little bit on the page 13, you'll see that there are, the attorneys identified some gray areas. So, for example, programs that involve discussion of power structures or power imbalances in society depend on how, according to the attorneys, the topic is approached. So there are some ways to develop, to allow for this sort of a conversation, in some ways that would not be permitted. And programs advocating for these concepts are more problematic, according to the attorneys, affirmative action and reparations and white privilege language that we've heard quite a bit in the news and in our government recently. And then finally, I'll conclude with page 14. So the top of that page also again restates those four areas. And then down at the bottom of the page, that second slide at the bottom on that page, schools are permitted to discuss as part of a larger course of academic instruction the historic existence of tax topics and subjects identified in the new law, compliance with ADA Section 504 and Individual Disabilities Education Act, which requires accommodation. So in effect, students are not being treated equally because there's another law that says we shouldn't treat them equally, and teaching about the existence of racism, sexism, and other forms of discrimination. I will add that part of the conversation that I've been aware of has included a fear or concern that teachers would proselytize or promote a particular political position or political viewpoint. And our policy committee is looking at a policy recommendation relative to that, that I think clearly states that teachers are not going to be proselytizing or trying to convince their students using their power to convince their students of a correct political position or incorrect political position. And I would be surprised if that policy recommendation didn't come to the board before the end of September. I think it is a priority. So I think those folks, and I've received some communication from parents, or seen communication from parents relative to the proselytizing issue that I think kind of got inflated with this stuff. And I think we're in good shape in terms of complying with the laws. I think we're in good shape with our social studies curriculum. And I think we will be in good shape relative to the issue of proselytizing or browbeating students, as we've seen videos and stories from across the country.
So what I'm getting from the information you just presented is historical facts should be taught as they are true.
Correct.
However, we're not going to take one segment of the group and say they're the bad race or they're the bad people. Yes. Okay.
We will, you know, of course, be advising our faculty and staff of the legal requirements under this law. And one of the suggested remedies, which you'll see in here, suggested precautions, is that when a topic is approached by a teacher, that the curriculum plans be reviewed. And I would think that Danielle would be in excellent position to do that and working with the teachers, particularly the social studies teachers.
Mr. Friedman? Dr. Friedman, I guess I should say. My memory serves from that workshop that if a parent feels that there is a concern that that law has been violated, that there is the Human Rights Office of New Hampshire that you would file the complaint with.
Yes.
As opposed to with a school board.
Yes. Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, yes, everything goes through court. That it doesn't go to the school board and it doesn't go to the Department of Education. It goes to the Attorney General and the HRC.
That's a good point.
Ask Dr. Freeman, but the first level of remediation is right here with Dr. Freeman, but not the school board.
And I would think that we would be able to address issues directly and quickly if the issue did come here at a local level. It is a little unusual, and I'm glad you brought that up, Melissa, that the complaints about the school typically, typically the complaints about the school with superintendent will go to the board or the Department of Ed. So this is really different, which is interesting.
Which really seems to be more serious.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
Thank you. And I thank the board for the opportunity, and I'm so glad that three board members participated. The last item that I have is the outline of what I'm planning for next week and the following weeks in terms of establishing goals and objectives. So I propose that, is there another one? Here we go. Sorry about that. So I'm proposing a three-step process. One, our school board will meet next Thursday, and we'll take five hours. Of course, we'll take a little bit of a break. I'm assuming it's going to be a working meal, Carrie, is that right? Or we're going to take?
Yeah, it's going to be like continuous.
In that case, I'll be here.
Yeah, she was going to get here like three o'clock.
Appreciate.
Great. So we'll be ready to go right at the outset. So our work together, I would like us to conclude our work together that night by going through these several steps, introduction, questions and norms, planning styles, which I think will help us understand each other and the importance of working together as a team. Not that I think that this board is divided at all. I admire your ability to work together and to accept opposing comments, to take some time to look at current conditions from your perspective, and then look at dreams and vision. Where do we want to get? What's our hope for the school? What are the values and beliefs that underline where we hope to get that support our mission statement? And what are the drivers of change? What do we need to be paying attention to in terms of achieving the mission? And out of that, prioritize, develop some general goals and prioritize those goals. And talk a little bit about board roles and categories of board leadership. I have several buckets that I want to take a look at that may even stimulate some other thought about goal areas. So that's a pretty hefty agenda for five hours. I think I, for one, will be tired at the end, and I hope you are too. Pardon me?
A good kind of tired.
Yes, yeah. As a second step, I propose that the administrative team, under my direction, would take those goals and have some time to flush them out. So our goals at the board level would not be smart goals. We want to develop smart objectives with very specific timelines and specific outcomes expected for both the one, three, and five-year timeframe. I'd also like to engage our faculty or perhaps the leadership in an activity called initiative mapping, where we look at the programs and initiatives and strategies that are broadly applied in the school now and do a quick kind of down and dirty evaluation. Are we getting from them what we hope to get? Are we getting the results? How would we grade this program? What's the potential impact of this program? So that we can have some data to help guide the establishment of those goals. And that will be matched with the board's reflection of current conditions. I recommend that we, you allow us about six weeks to do that. I originally had four weeks, but then was told that we couldn't do it in four weeks. Thank you, Danielle. It was a little overly ambitious, but I often need somebody to pull me back and slap me around with a little reality now and then. And then propose that the school board take a look at our work in the context of your work on October 13th, make any modifications, and adopt the program. And I'm awfully glad, very excited.
This is exciting. How long have we waited for this?
At least two years.
Oh, more than that. Thank you. This is unbelievable. Thank you.
You bet. And just as a last item, I just want to thank my colleagues, Melissa, Lisa, and Danielle. I neglected to thank them for reviewing the draft COVID response. I've got some good feedback today and made some last-minute modifications. And also got some, shared this document with them. Shared this document with them. And so, yeah, that's what prompted you to set me straight on that date. So should be good. Looking forward to it.
Great.
And I think that concludes my report. But Eric, I want to pass this over to Eric because this committee will talk about transportation.
I just want to go back. Do you think with the COVID, the school board plan that we'll need more than 15?
No.
No.
As I said, I tried not to do anything, anything really different from what was happening before with the board. I did steal some things. I looked at other school districts. Looked at Dover's, Oyster Rouge, Boe, a couple of others. It's field, I have some, I think. So I saw what they were impeding for parents. I want to be able to get this out for parents.
Aaron, is the air conditioner on now?
No.
Why?
It's so loud, you can't hear the.
Oh, okay.
You can't hear the tape if they come.
All of a sudden it got really hot. Okay, there we go.
Are we doing committees?
Um, yeah, we're going to, we added committees to the, yeah.
So can I go first really quickly? Because I apologize, I have to scoot out early. Education committee, we met, I think, before the last meeting, we met and did some hiring. Since then, we've met on student matters. So the education committee has a representative from Stratford, Northwood, Nottingham, and the Board of Trustees, which functions as Co-Brown's governing body. So that's the update from the education committee. The delegate assembly is coming up on October 16th. You should have gotten the email with all the resolutions, read through those. We need to budget time in September for us to discuss those so that we can vote as a board, how we want to vote on those resolutions. Mine came just as, into the Gmail, into the, whatever the third account is, promotions or whatever. It didn't come into my primary. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there to folks so that you can find it. And then the last thing that sort of, I think, follows under delegate, I did the School Board Association legislative update today. And I think, not that I am, I am not proposing that this board necessarily become tremendously politically active, that's not what I'm suggesting, but I do think that perhaps we can talk next week about becoming more politically savvy and discuss more of the legislation that is happening so that we're not blindsided or, you know, there's just, there's a lot of nuance that goes into things. And there's a number of these things that I think we, as taxpayers personally, would want to know about, whether we have kids graduating in the near future or not. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there for folks to think about that maybe that we want to maybe make that part of the committee reports. And I'm happy to go to the legislative updates and sort of report back. But some of these, some of the ones discussed today definitely have policy implications. There's changes to non-public, to sealing records from non-public, to reasons you can go into non-public. There's stuff that is impacting graduation, like families are going to have to fill out the FAFSA, whether your student is going to college or not. You're going to have to pass the citizenry, you know, citizenship. I need to take it. But the citizenship test that, so to graduate now, you're going to have to pass that with a 70%, just like if you were somebody coming to be a citizen of the United States. So there's just, there's a lot of moving pieces. And it just, I think, maybe under the heading of us being more informed and more worldly that every couple of months, we can just go over what's new and hot.
I think we also used to get updates, the superintendent's report with new things that were going on. It was like, this was, this was several years ago. This was.
No, every once in a while, they would certainly hit the big ticket items or the, but I don't remember the details. Some of, I was surprised how many have, you need to review this policy. And sometimes it was, like, for example, there's a shift in being able to use not school buses to transport for activities, not to in front of school, but activities. So think the D.C. trip. Technically, we weren't supposed to be using coach buses to go to D.C., the way the laws are written. So they've revised the law that you can use approved passenger vehicles that aren't school buses. That affects three different policies for us to go back and double check. So that sort of, I didn't realize how many sometimes it touched, just one little change. So I'm just putting it out there. And I have to leave.
All right, so have a nice visit.
Thank you, I know.
I said goodbye to Elijah yesterday. He left a call.
Yeah. Hopefully he'll get back before he goes to here. Thank you.
All righty. Okay, so now we have the transportation committee.
Yes, we got, we did, we did these meetings. Well, essentially, we emailed back and forth. Eric got the draft routes from the bus company and shared them with all of us. We looked at them and I have, looks like I got two copies of the Stratford routes. I don't have a copy of the Co-Brown route. Oh, it is on the back. Okay. There we go then. Just had extra copies. So Co-Brown has already started and Stratford starts next week, so it would be good to approve these tonight if we can.
Okay, so that's what you're asking for them to be approved?
Yes, and these were, I asked Eric if there was any significant changes, and he said there was not. And these were all, the bus company went over everything and we all looked at them.
Okay. So do we have drivers for every, do we have bus drivers for everything?
I was not told that we didn't.
We do, okay.
We do, okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve the draft bus routes, both for the elementary school and for Co-Brown.
I move that we approve the bus routes as presented in these packets for both Stratford Elementary School, Co-Brown for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Carrie, discussion?
Just real quick, this also goes to COVID. I do not believe we, as a school board, have any say over masking on the buses. I've heard, I've read it in a couple of different places, that that's not our decision.
Did they make a decision yet?
I, I thought I read a brief update today.
They did? What did they, what's their decision?
Yeah.
In public transportation, I think they include school buses in the public education rules, so it's a national directive.
So this is, we, we have to.
Parents need to know that then?
Yeah.
Okay, this, we should have something that goes out that they're going to have to wear masks on the bus because, okay.
Well, if we get that, you know, that the COVID thing out, it's there. It's not.
All right, all right. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All righty, so Liz?
Yes.
Erica is gone. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay, that's another thing done. But you posted the draft, right? Did I say this posted? So people sort of knew this was, okay.
We wanted to, in that email chain, we wanted to get it out for the Co-Brown.
Did they know that they had to wear masks? Did the Co-Brown kids know for the bus?
They put some extra masks on the bus.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay, because they're not wearing them, the Co-Brown?
Yeah.
I mean, it's optional. Okay. All right. So that's it with committees? Are they, the facility committee, they are painting that building?
Yes, and the roof is 95% done last night.
Roof is coming.
Yep.
And the building is partly painted.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I have a question.
We have a meeting next week.
I have a question, Lisa, about the, under the facilities committee update with the roof. I know that there was a question a couple of weeks ago about that first payment. Did it come out of our capital reserve or how did it work out?
That came out under the, I think it was approved from one of the warrant articles, those additional funds. So I don't think that was, I think the capital reserve is the next payment.
Okay. Because I know that when we made the motion, we actually made it twice, to be really clear, because Glenn Morris, he didn't get the first motion. So that he had something, you know, in the minutes. know, in the minutes to show, yes, we can take this money out of there. So you should probably have those minutes. John, were they in? I think the minutes were, was that like in May that we approved?
It was either, I was, might have been June 9th that we, it was late spring.
Yeah. So it's probably the end of May, beginning of June, we made a motion to take out half the payment of the capital reserve.
And we made a different motion the next meeting.
Right. Clarifying motion. Yeah, so we should be. Do you want to find the minutes and send them to Lisa? Because that may be easier, because there's going to be two, and it might be confusing. Because you need to have a copy of that, that we actually approved it. The only people that have approved taking money out of their account is the boards. Okay. All right. You're welcome. All righty, so.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Danielle just reminded me, she has one.
Open house date, we had talked about setting one, and you wanted to do like the SAU ribbon cutting at the same time?
I don't know about that. About, I think, I think we should do two different, because we get so many people here for the open house, that they really want to see the kids, I mean, they want to see their teachers. I think the community is more apt to come and see the SAU, so I think it's like, it's two different groups of people.
I didn't want to set the open house date if we were going to align things without talking to you, but if you want to do them two separate, I'll just set it.
Yeah, we still have to make sure the SAU is all completely painted.
The signs, we want the signs.
We want the signs!
All right, so I'll just set an open house date. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All righty, so set future meetings. We have the workshop on August 26th at 3:00. We will start with a brief public session to review the back-to-school plan for the COVID issues, and then on September 8th, we'll have our first regular meeting in September, and September 22nd will be our second meeting of the month in September.
I'll take the gap on February 22nd.
Okay.
That could do you again.
Okay, all right. Okay, so. Now we have time for public comments, if anybody would like to share something.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for listening to all of us. It really makes us feel heard, and it's very refreshing. I know there was some issues with budgeting, but we appreciate you trying to finagle something for our kids. We appreciate it.
Of course. Okay. All right. Thank you for coming. I knew you were going to be here, Keisha, I would have brought clothes. I have little boy clothes.
You know, it's Zach, you know, or.
Oh, yes. Why don't we meet? Do you want to?
Yes, I'd just like the board to meet our new technology director, Zach. I know, he's with us now full-time regularly, and we're finally phasing Aaron out.
Oh, I'll say that.
Everybody about Sarah.
So nice to meet you, Zach.
Thank you.
Very excited with that, to have Zach join us. Great qualifications and a wonderful person to work with.
Thank you. Erin, you're going to still be here for a while, right? Will we see you again? We're going to see you again?
Sure.
All right. Yeah. All right, anybody else? I think we are all set. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay. All right. And Liz?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Carrie? And Debbie? Yes. All right, that was great.